I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October 29th, 2014. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room. And a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting, and we appreciate your cooperation. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, be sure to come up here and pick up a coupon for free parking. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on items 1.1, Comp Plan Conformance Number 14023, and number 1.2, Special Permit Number 14043. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days, fouling the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 15, 2014. Do we have a motion?
Move approval. Second?
Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
State.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jean to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted on in total with a motion for approval. Jean, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item 1.1 is County Comprehensive Plan Conformance 14023 to review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan, the acquisition of a permanent conservation easement by the Lower Platte South Natural Resources District to preserve flood storage and conveyance through the conservation of floodplain and floodway lands and support the Prairie Corridor on the Haynes Branch link to the Salt Valley Greenway with a trail easement and the conservation of grasslands and other natural resources. The property is generally located at southwest 84th Street and west Old Chaney Road. Item 1.2 is Special Permit 14043. I am removing this item from the consent agenda. Commissioner Lust has declared a conflict of interest. So item 1.2 will be called as a separate public hearing. Item 1.3, Street and Alley Vacation 14008 to vacate southwest 31st Street from the south right-of-way line of West Denton Road to the north right-of-way line of West Covered Bridge Road. This is in The Bridges Edition, generally located at southwest 31st Street and west Denton Road. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
I see none.
I have removed item 1.2, Special Permit 14043. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any other item on the consent agenda?
Seeing no one, we will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second? Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lust?
There are no requests for deferral on today's agenda. We will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jean, please call the first item on the public hearing items.
Yes, and this is an application where Commissioner Lust has declared a conflict of interest. Vice Chair Hove will conduct this public hearing. It's item 1.2 on page 15, Special Permit 14043 for authority to sell alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises associated with a restaurant. The property is located at 4747 Pioneer's Boulevard. Staff recommendation is conditional approval, and this is final action unless appealed to the City Council. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I see none.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brian Will, Planning Department. As Jean noted, this is special permit for the sale of alcohol for consumption on the premises in conjunction with a restaurant. And just for reference, make sure we all know where we're talking about here. South 48th Street, Pioneer's Boulevard. It's the small commercial center just southwest of the intersection. What I've highlighted here on the vicinity map, two things, zoning district line boundary, which is here in blue, that being R2 to the west and south, and then a little commercial center and property to the north, Zone B1. The area here in yellow is the proposed licensed premises, that is, the area to be occupied by the restaurant. So it's not going to occupy the entire building, only that portion there at the northeast corner. Recall, sale of alcohol is regulated by special permit in the zoning ordinance, and in those districts where allowed. It requires a special permit, which says that there shall be separation from several things, actually. That would include first-floor residential use, daycare facility, park, church, or state mental health institution, or residential district. But recall, those special separate provisions then for a restaurant modify those conditions, and the sale of alcohol is allowed in conjunction with a restaurant. Those other separation criteria go away, and now it's allowed 25 feet away from residential zoning district. And so that's the only separation criteria that is included now. And so I did kind of a simple graphic here just to illustrate. Here again, the licensed premises is right here at the corner. Sorry, it's a pretty washed-out graphic, but I think it can illustrate. The yellow lines here represent coming in 25 feet from the adjacent residential zoning district, so it's obvious that it's way exceeds that 25-foot separation. So as you look through the criteria, we found that this request meets all the criteria for special permit, and with that, we're recommending conditional approval. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brian? Go ahead.
Do you have any more information now about the parking compliance?
No, it's a condition of approval. My feeling is that there's well in excess of what's required. I don't believe it's going to be an issue. I'll work with the applicant after the hearing today to get that information, but I don't anticipate that's going to be an issue.
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of piggyback on her question just a little bit, and then I have another one for you, Brian. I'm being a little bit lazy here. I didn't look up the parking stall requirements, but how many for a restaurant are required per square foot?
Well, yeah, the reason I included that is what we're doing, we're talking about the parking requirement for this entire building, and it's a multi-tenant building. So we have multiple uses in there, which come and go, they change over time. So what we want to do is take a snapshot in time today of those uses that are there, and then calculate this user now coming in. Generally speaking, it's going to be for the users that are there except one. It's going to be one space per 300 square feet of floor area. There is a daycare here, and that has a different requirement, and it's one per employee and one per 10 kids, one per every 10 kids. And so there's an unknown there. And then for the restaurant, it's one space per 100 square feet of floor area. So we have different uses, we have different parking requirements. It's just a matter of getting the specific information on all of the users, floor area, taking that picture in time. Like I said, this use is very well parked, and I don't believe that that's going to be an issue.
My other question has to do with the childcare facility that's in the building, and I'm a little confused, and I'd just like you to clarify. I know you talked about it a little bit already, but so because it's a restaurant and not just, say, on-sale facility, the 100-foot rule doesn't apply to the daycare facility?
Correct. That 100-foot separation to residential, first-floor residential use, daycare, church, park, et cetera, that applies only when it's an on-sale use, okay? A bar liquor store would be, or sorry, a bar would be sort of your typical conventional use that we think of. Separate and apart from that, we have a special, sort of a special exception here for restaurants. That separation, all those other criteria under the first portion of the special permit no longer apply. And now the only separation we need to worry about is 25 feet away from residential zoning district. I think the rationale was that a restaurant is not a sports bar, is not other things typical on-sale. So it's a special set of circumstances just for a restaurant.
Thank you. Brian, can you pop your map back up there for me real quick? Thanks. Yeah, can you just show us the access points to the parking and address traffic patterns a little bit? The space is a little tricky, I think, because we do have a childcare on one side, and then on the other end is a dance studio, and having taken kids to dance lessons there, there's just a lot of kids running back and forth out to cars. And so I was just curious if you could talk about sort of the vision for how people are going to be getting in and out of here, and what times of day predominantly we're expecting traffic for the restaurant?
Well, yeah, I think the primary entrance points to the parking lots, I think, are here, here, and then here. The primary entrance to the building, I believe, is here off the north. I think that's the entrance to the restaurant. Yeah, I mean, you'd anticipate that peak demand for the restaurant is perhaps noon, evenings likely, which would typically not be the peak demand for the daycare, which would be early morning and mid-late afternoon.
Although parents are picking kids up at 5:30, do you know where the entrance to the daycare is?
I don't. I think that it's off, I think that it's off the east side of the building here, I believe.
And do we know if there's ever, do parents stay in car, teachers bring them out, or do parents park and go in to get kids?
I don't know. I don't know the operating characteristics of that daycare facility, honestly.
Okay. To me, that seems like kind of an important point, because if you do have cars that stack up waiting, then you run into problems with cars coming in and out of the parking lot if they're coming at the dinner hour at the same time people are picking up kids. And so I don't know if the, I don't know if the owners here could maybe address that a little bit.
Well, and maybe she, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, give her a chance. What I'd add, though, is that the restaurant itself, that's a permitted use in this district. So that, regardless of the special permit for alcohol, the restaurant could be here regardless. What we're really talking about here is this, you know, this component for on-sale alcohol. So the daycare is a permitted use, the restaurant itself is a permitted use. All of these tenants that are in this building, they're all uses that are allowed in this district without any additional approval beyond that, or really review of their operating characteristics. So, but yeah, I, sorry, I just, I'm not familiar enough with that daycare.
That's okay. It comes to mind because I, you know, had kids in preschool not that long ago and dealt with all of that. And then I was curious, I didn't see, can you address notification of neighbors? Did neighbors and Neighborhood Association get notified about this?
Right. Within, actually, it's within this boundary, the larger boundary of the property, this dash line, everyone within 200 feet. So it would have gotten, you know, it would have gotten neighbors to the west and to the south, would have also gone across the street here. So I had no, I had no concerns or comments about this use. I did have a, I was contacted by commercially zoned property for the south. It was a drainage issue, wasn't associated with this use, but sort of prompted by, hey, I got a notice from you guys, by the way, sort of thing. So, but that was the only, that was the only contact I had.
Okay, and the Neighborhood Association was comfortable with alcohol spacing?
I would assume that they are because I didn't hear otherwise.
But we did notify them, then?
I can tell you what ones we did notify. The Greater South Neighborhood Association, South 48th Street Neighborhood Association, College View Neighborhood Association, and Pioneer Grove Condominiums, Inc. were notified.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you. To applicant?
Hi. My name is Cynthia Lopez, and I live here in Lincoln. My address is 2310 Garfield Street, and I am the one who is applicant for this liquor license. The reason is that I want to show a different kind of Mexican restaurant, which includes the food. We are using traditional pre-Hispanic ingredients for our food, and we are combining that to create a new plates. I am asking for the liquor license because I think it's nice when you are going to a restaurant and ask for a cup of wine to eat your steak, or I don't know if you like, for example, we have a new drink, which is called mezcal. I don't know if you heard about it. It is a little different, but we are going to use it like mixed, so that way it's, you know, you are not getting drunk with that, just if you drink so much. But I've been working in a restaurant for a long time, and I never had a trouble. What else? I don't know if you have any question for me?
Any questions?
Just one quick one. So you may have heard my questions, Brian. I was just curious, are you going to be planning to serve alcohol all day or just in the dinner hour?
Well, I've been studying the market, and I know, like, usually people have 35 minutes during lunch and then more time for dinner. So we want to have all the options available, but I know also that we are near of the Union College, and it's like a Catholic church or school. So we have different options. For example, you can get pina colada with alcohol, you can choose rum, you can choose tequila, or you can pick mezcal if you like. But we are, we're going to be very careful with that kind of things. Yeah, I like to offer, like, all drinks all day, but especially during the night, probably we will have a kind of discount for people.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have more questions for Brian? Anyone? All right. You don't have any more to say? I guess I entertain a motion. Move approval, conditional approval of the special permit. Second? Thank you. Discussion? Well, I think this is a good use for this property, although we need to think about how you manage with the childcare center right beside it, but I plan to support this. Amy?
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
And Ho?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, and this is final action unless appealed to the City Council. Ready? All right. Next public hearing items are 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3. I'm going to call them together for purposes of hearing, we'll vote on them separately. Item 4.1 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 14005. To amend the comprehensive plan, to add the South Salt Creek Watershed Master Plan to the list of approved subarea plans and to the list of adopted watershed studies. Item 4.2 is the same, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 14006 for the Haynes Branch Watershed Master Plan. And item 4.3 is the same, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 14007. That's for the Middle Creek Watershed Master Plan. The staff recommendation is approval of all three comp plan amendments. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed? I see none. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jared Nelson with Watershed Management and Public Works, and I'm going to just give a quick explanation of what's before you right now with these three watershed So the current master plans in front of you include Haynes Branch, Middle Creek, and South Salt Creek Tributaries. And this is a continuation of efforts that we've been doing for about the last decade. This map here shows some of the other watersheds within Lincoln and the county that have been approved already and adopted. The ones in green here, Dead Man's Run, Antelope Creek, Stevens Creek, et cetera. So these other three are what's before you now. And we hired a consultant and have gone through a good public involvement process, and I just want to go through a few bullets right here with you. I guess just to be clear, this is an effort that's joint between us and the Lower Platte South NRD, and the county was also involved with that. So it's, and that was, the funding also is partly from the NRD as well. The three watersheds that we did, I wanted to point out, we generally cut them off around the ETJ of the city. This map here shows Haynes Branch. The entire watershed goes clear out, you know, out into Seward and Saline County, but we kind of trimmed it off at the ETJ to just focus in on the areas that we anticipate will be developed, you know, in the near future. Some of the components that were involved with the master plan process are, were to, you know, seek public involvement, include a review of the assets and the features that are in the area or special areas, and then also to just get out in the field and assess the streams and do a lot of field work. And that was, that's really the meat of these reports, and I'll go into that a little bit So the consultants that we hired, they actually walked a lot of the stream miles, pretty much all these main tribes through here, all the main channels and some of the tribes, the tributaries that flow into the main channel. They were out there, they were walking them, they were taking pictures, they had equipment with them to document findings that they noticed in the field. In Haynes Branch, they walked 28 miles of stream, and Middle Creek, 34 miles, and then South Salt Creek, 78 miles. So they were out there, they saw a lot of really good, interesting things, and we got good data out of it. And like I was describing earlier, a lot of the projects, a lot of the focus in these plans was geomorphic analysis. It's the studying of the streams and how they evolve and the process. One thing that I wanted to mention also is the public involvement. We did have a series of two public meetings, and we also sent out three newsletters to residents, to businesses, homeowners associations, kind of the whole gamut. Here's an example of, you know, one of the newsletters that we sent out, and this one I'm using as an example because it kind of highlights some of the things that we focused in on. The premise of these master plans, after all the field work was done and the analysis was done, is to come up with capital improvement projects. And so we have capital improvement projects from all of our different watersheds, from all our different watershed master plans, and this is just more, more capital improvement projects that then we can add to our list so that we know that we're picking the right project to do, the highest priority project. And here, with these three watershed master plans, most, all the, actually, all of the projects were stream stability projects. And that, those are things like grade control projects, bank stabilization projects, and outlet stalling basin or scour protection. I won't go into the details of those, but, you know, we tried to inform everybody and kept everybody in the loop of what we were going through and some of the findings that And I also did bring just one example to kind of show you. So a lot of the stream stability type projects, what that is, is, you know, if a channel or a stream or a river, if it gets cut too deep or starts meandering and cutting into a bank side, you know, the soils in the bank start eroding, and it can threaten infrastructure that is next to the stream or downstream of the stream. So this is one of the CIP projects that was developed, and it shows the stream here and Van Dorn Street, and it's proposing bank stabilization along these outer bends here to protect the infrastructure of the road. So it's pretty straightforward, you know, I think most people agree that these are good projects. So all the, like I was saying, all the projects were stream stability projects, and just to give you a quick synopsis of those capital improvement projects, I've got a summary here for Haynes Branch. So Haynes Branch, we have, again, grade control and bank stabilization projects. We also went through a priority ranking system, which is the same that we've done on our other master plans, where we rank the projects. So it shows the ranking and the costs, estimated costs of the project. And for Middle Creek, again, bank stabilization, grade control, stalling basin. So these are the CIP projects from that study. And then the last one, the South Salt Creek, is, there's quite a bit of projects here. It's a larger area. I'm sure some of you have seen this map, but it starts, the study area goes way down to Roca, and Wagon Train Lake is down here, and then it includes a lot of these tributaries that drain into Salt Creek as you get up to downtown. So again, the same types of projects for the South Salt Creek Master Plan. The next steps are, I guess, you know, this is before you to be hopefully included in the comprehensive plan, as, you know, added to the list of subarea plans and watershed master plans. The NRD board has already approved the plans, and next we'll be going, hopefully going to the County Board and the City Council. So are there any other questions?
Maya? So you were talking about ETJ being the boundary of the project. Would you mind explaining that term if there are any interested citizens listening in?
Yes. The ETJ, that stands for extraterritorial jurisdiction, and it's with, and then The ETJ, that stands for extraterritorial jurisdiction, and it's with, and in the city, it's a three-mile buffer around the city limits. So, you can see it here.
Great, thank you.
I just had a quick question about the project ranking for the CIP. The priority scores, I mean, we have three master plans here. If, like, the priority score in the South Salt Creek basin is much higher than even the number one projects in the other two basins, do they all get lumped together in a CIP request, or how does that work?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. I'm going to refer back to this newsletter again. It explains the prioritization just a little bit. The prioritization, the scoring system that's used includes things like flooding or safety impacts, or, you know, infrastructure that's being threatened. And so, all of our different master plans are scored the same way so that we can rank them all together collectively. So, even though in one, it says it's ranked one, that's not necessarily the case if there's a higher priority project in, you know, Stevens Creek, for example. So, we would choose that one, it's a better project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any?
Well, thank you for your time.
Do we have any testimony in support of this application? Any testimony in opposition? Questions for staff? All right. I believe we have to call these separately, correct? Jean?
Calling for action, comprehensive plan amendment number 14005, which adds the South Salt Creek watershed master plan to the list of approved subarea plans and the list of adopted watershed studies in the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation is approval.
Discussion?
I need motion first.
I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Well, I appreciate all of the work that has gone into all three of these master plans and the detailed work that's gone into giving priority to these projects. And I'm going to support the addition of these three projects into the comprehensive plan. Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Comprehensive plan amendment 14006 is the Haynes Branch watershed master plan. Staff recommendation is approval.
Move approval? Second.
Any further discussion? All right. Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes. Motion for approval carries eight to zero. Comprehensive plan amendment 14007 is the Middle Creek watershed master plan. Staff recommendation is approval.
Move approval? Second.
Further discussion? All right. Call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ho?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion for approval carries eight to zero. These are recommendations to this county board and the city council. Calling for public hearing, item 4.4 on page 59, comprehensive plan conformance 14022, to review a proposed amendment to the Antelope Valley redevelopment plan as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. The project, they're adding a project. It's entitled the 23rd and O Street Project, which includes the rehabilitation and expansion of an existing retail building to be used for providing health care services. It's on approximately two acres, generally located between O Street on the north and Street on the south, South 23rd Street on the west, and the north-south alley on the east. The project area includes adjacent rights of way of O Street, N Street, and South 23rd Street. The staff recommendation is a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan. I would note that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on this application. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
I see none. Thank you. Mr. Landis?
Thank you so much. Members of the Planning Commission, we are the applicant on behalf of altering our existing Antelope Valley redevelopment plan so that we can describe a project as we do in this plan amendment, which then would be the basis upon which the city would bring forward a redevelopment agreement with the developer. But that development has to be sufficiently well-described in the plan to serve as the basis or the springboard for the ultimate redevelopment agreement that we would like to proceed towards in this case. The location's at 23rd and O Street. This is the building that you've driven by. I stopped the other night when I saw a sign that said 40% off, entire store, 40% off. I didn't see the little box that said up to 40% off, so the, the washable pens for my grandkids were 15% off when I stopped. But by the time they close, it'll be up to 40% off. This is the location that's closing. And that will be occasioned by, I think, a reshuffling of the Office Max business and the merger that they have. We do have, however, a developer who wishes to make use of this building. They're negotiating now with a series of 501(c)(3), the most prominent of which is clinic space, which I think the city would say would be well-located if it was in this area.
I'm sorry, did you say clinic space? Thanks.
You said?
This is a rendering that's been provided by Clark Anderson to the Urban Design Committee. We've been to them already, the developer has, and I think response was generally positive, although I believe there's an opportunity to go back and continue the conversation on the coming ones. In the event there was to be a project here, it would be covered by the downtown design standards. It's inside those areas, and that means transparency in windows. It also means in the case of a parking lot, that there's either buffering through masonry and fencing or through shrubbery and landscaping. One of the things that we intend to have happen here in talking to the developer, and that interests us very much, is the use of landscaping. If you were to see a more aerial view, this area is now broken concrete and asphalt and to be redone, and then to add some street trees here on O Street, there is some landscaping to the right now. The plan on the back has yet to be determined. I did notice that there'd been a conversation about the softening of the backside of the building. There isn't a plan to do so. I don't think the desire is to use a really expensive facade on what is a back wall that's, I think, perhaps problematic. The suggestion that we've made to them is the idea of a mural, something that was done in, across from the Park Street School, where the Park Street kids were involved with, or the Clinton neighborhood, where Clinton children's art was incorporated into a piece of art that would soften and personalize and create linkage with the community. One of the side effects is that none of those murals have ever been the target of graffiti, sort of because I think perhaps the ownership of their, that idea's been talked about. There is a notion that there's a big blank wall on the backside. Replacing that with brick, however, would be hugely expensive and not something that the developer has a mind to do. To do something back there is of interest to them and us as well. The project that's currently being discussed is about $5.3 million of private investment. It yields, in the neighborhood of half a million dollars of TIF. The one thing that the city has said very clearly to the developer is, we want with that, we intend to see landscaping, a significant amount of landscaping to change the shape and feel of the space. However, it's not lost on the city that it would be valuable to allow a clinic to be successful at this location. In a building built in a location, we wouldn't probably let them build a second time. There is a sewer line or a sanitation line under this building, and it wouldn't have been, it wasn't something that you did normally, it wouldn't be something that you would do now. It is, on the other hand, on this location, is a fact to be dealt with. So, if you brought the whole building down, I think you'd say, oh, you need a different footprint, you can't build what you had. To make the project work in that sense, refurbishing the building that exists in a location that is already committed to this, and whatever judgment went into building a building on top of a sanitation line, has been asked and answered and now has to be dealt with. And this does that. It is consistent with the downtown comp plan, we think, in a number of ways. The staff report from planning recites those. I'd be happy to answer any questions, although perhaps you may be more interested in talking to the developer since the plans that they have for the eventual use of the building is theirs to be recited.
Questions for Mr. Landis?
A couple. Dave, by the way, I think that place does sell buttons that you can put pictures in, and if you have a good one, like, from the front page of the paper of yourself, you can, I think those might be on sale.
Or as Tom Cassidy said, he said, you know, it's not a mullet, but you can see a mullet from here.
It was pretty good, it was nice.
There's a picture of me on the front page of the paper today with apparently a full head of hair.
What prompted the hairstyle change?
Well, it did it on its own, Commissioner. I may have as much hair as I did then, it's just on the inside now, crowding out my brain.
Did you say that this did go before urban design? Because I didn't see it noted in here.
Yes.
Okay.
I say that because my notes reflect that, although I was not present at the meeting.
Okay. So, because we didn't have access to the minutes prior to this, can you just give us a quick rundown of their comments? I know you alluded to them a little bit.
Perhaps maybe either Wynne or Mark or Bill, who was at the meeting, would be a better representative. Wynne, would it be fair to call on you to do that?
Hi, Wynne Yermsdahl, with the City's Urban Development Department, not having my notes with me on urban design, calling on my memory. They had concerns about N Street also, would like to see something done there. One of the considerations, in addition to the mural that we've thrown out to them, they have come back to us, right now, there's two loading docks on the backside. Potentially, one of those could go away, and if that happened, there would be more room for landscaping on the N Street side. So, they were interested in N Street, they were interested in landscaping, which is certainly something that the developer wants to do anyway, as well as the city. They were interested in building materials, which they liked what the developer was proposing, which is a brick facade, which is not there now. And in fact, they had even suggested, not formally, but part of the discussion was, maybe you don't use as much brick, and then you could do something a little bit splashier on the front. But I think the developer likes the brick. They mentioned downtown design standards and attempting to follow those as much as possible, which they are doing and have been working with Ed on that. I think that was, were you, Marvin, were you there? Okay. I think that was pretty much the gist of it. There wasn't any, and they definitely saw a great improvement over what's there now. Didn't, there were no red flags, nothing that they said, you know, this is a showstopper or anything, but did ask to see it again when they were a little bit further along in design.
Okay. Thank you.
That's basically the gist.
Thank you. And then my only other question, I was just curious, since we're kind of looking at making the, placing this where it's needed, has there been any discussion about trying to put an entrance on that N Street side? I'm interested in the N Street side as well, because it's one of the few properties along that block that do take up the whole block, and so the back of it is the front of N Street, and it's right across from the school. So, I was just curious, I love the idea of a mural or something, I was just curious if...
If there has been discussion of an entryway, I don't know about it, the developer's sure you can ask him. I think the problem is this, the existing building is at the property line. So, it's not uncommon when you have an entrance or exit to need more space.
Right.
You've got to have a sidewalk, someplace to walk, someplace for doors to open out, things like that. And if your building is at the property, and I believe that's the case here on N Street, it limits what you can do for usage. You might be able to get to it from the sides, but it would leave this rather expansive wall on the backside of N Street.
Is there a sidewalk around? Because if folks are approaching from that side, that is a pretty daunting way to go around the building. It's just, as I recall, I think the parking lot comes right up to it. I'm just wanting to make sure if people are approaching on foot, that there's a nice way for them to approach, maybe if the dock goes away, that gives us something to play with, but just a thought, think about.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Landis?
Dave, is there any environmental issues with having a sewer line underneath the
Now, that I know of. This has not occasioned either a state or federal environmental review. When I say that this is a building that we wouldn't do a second time, I'm not referring to a state or federal environmental law. I'm referring to the way our Public Works Department would now say we don't want to build. And the reason is, you don't want to have to make a repair on something that's under a building. You want to be able to get to it. And so, this was an aberration, and it's an aberration that we have to live to, but our Public Works Department say, don't tread on me and don't build on my sewers.
Any other questions?
All right. Do we have testimony from the developer?
Less hair, but he still looks the same, doesn't he? Mark Hunsaker appearing on behalf of Apples Way LLC, the owner of this building. We are in discussions with the Urban Development Department about moving forward with the project. As to the exterior design of the project, I would just say, we are going back to the Urban Design Committee again, but, and so the design isn't final. However, the exterior design on this project is secondary to making sure that the interior works for our prospective tenants, including things like asbestos removal and essentially rebuilding the entire interior of the building at a price they can afford. We are dealing with nonprofit agencies and are really trying very hard to help them to get something that's going to house them for quite some time at a rate that they can afford to pay. We've consulted with Ed Zimmer about the downtown design standards with respect to the building. We're confident we will meet those. And we've been really unwilling to spend any more money on the exterior design at this point, because one of the things that remains undecided is whether or not there will be an addition to the building, which may be somewhere in the 5,000 to 8,000 square foot range. So, we've got a fair amount of things that are yet to be determined. We hope that those are going to come clear to us in the next week to 10 days, but they're not yet, and so we're here with this plan, which is a general statement of intent of what we intend to do. We think it represents fairly what we will ultimately do in accordance with a redevelopment agreement, because otherwise, we'll have to come back to you with a different one. But we're pretty confident that this is a fair representation of what we will ultimately do. Let's try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mark?
Is the expansion you're thinking of, it's, you're looking at going to the east side, right?
It would have to go to the east. As Dave said, there is a, there is a storm sewer conduit that runs under the building. It's a, it's a, it's not a sanitary sewer, but a storm sewer, and it's a very large one. It's been recently relined, so we're confident that it's not going to need those kinds of major repairs that everyone worries about when you have it under your building, but it is there, and we can't go out and add to the building.
So, that sewer line is on the west side of the building?
Actually, the storm sewer runs through the building north and south. It runs just pretty much through the middle of the building.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other testimony in support of this application? Any testimony in opposition? Questions for staff? And I assume we do not need rebuttal, so we'll move forward with a motion. Move approval?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a couple of comments. I, I've waited a long time for this building to be ready, to be upgraded. I think they've done a nice job with the design. I do think it's fair to talk about the back of the building, especially because we're potentially using TIF financing for this, and I think part of the improvements go not just with the interior, but with the exterior.
just with the interior, but with the exterior and the impact on the area around it. There's a school on N Street, a lot of the other businesses on N Street face N Street, so I certainly think economy is important, but I would love to see us do something, whether it's a mural or something, to help improve this, because I also think, next to that school, eventually, we're probably going to have even more residences and development, so... But I appreciate the effort they've put in on this, and I intend to support it.
Any other comments? Tracy?
I too feel that the N Street facade is important, and since we are using TIF, we need to encourage some improvements on that side as well, because as Kathy says, the other businesses on the blocks on either side of that, those businesses do face N Street, so I think it's important to kind of have that continuity there and do something so we just don't have a blank brick wall that's kind of uninviting.
Any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Beacham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that motion for a finding of conformance with the comprehensive plan approving such carries seven to zero. And we'll get Commissioner Shear can come back now. This is a recommendation, of course, to the City Council.
Again?
Our last items for public hearing today are 4.5a and b. I'll call them together for the hearing. Page 69, text amendment 14010, amending chapter 26.23 of the Lincoln Municipal Code Development Standards. This relates to widths of rights-of-way to increase the width of a pedestrian way easements from five feet to 15 feet. Also amending a section to set forth location width requirements of pedestrian way easements, relating also, an amendment to 26.23130 relating to block sizes, to add provisions relating to the measurement of block lengths. Also an amendment relating to lots to delete width requirements for residential lots servient and adjacent to pedestrian way easements. The other item is text amendment number 14011, which amends the title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to exceptions to height and lot regulations, to revise the minimum separation between buildings and pedestrian way easements from 10 feet to 12.5 feet from the center line of the easement. The staff recommendation on both items is approval. The first text amendment, I'd point out, is to the subdivision ordinance, and the second is to the zoning ordinance. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
Yes. I was at a mayor's round, neighborhood roundtable meeting where staff presented these two text amendments. Others? Tom?
Jake, the planning staff. I'll go through each of these amendments one at a time here. First, to discuss the pedestrian way easement, we are requesting that that easement be widened from a minimum of five feet to a minimum of 15 feet. The easement would be on outlots. If the subdivision had other common open space or private streets within it, that would require a homeowner's association to maintain those open areas, then they could also maintain the pedestrian easement. That way, it relieves a individual property owner of having to maintain it, and it's the entire association would have to maintain it. There could be some rare instances where a subdivision does not have any kind of common open space, then it would have to be on a private property in those instances, but it's pretty rare these days to have a subdivision that doesn't have some kind of common open space in a homeowner's association. The other reason we're asking for it to be widened is that the five-foot wide easements have run into some difficulties in the past. Some people feel unsafe, concerns about it. There's also issues of having room to clear snow. As you can see on this one picture in your packet, I brought the colored one, so they can see, you can see it a little better. This is an example of a five-foot wide pedestrian easement, as you can see with fences on both sides, be very difficult to move snow, and my guess is probably it doesn't get moved. And it's just, you know, very uninviting.
In that particular one, Tom, is, are the homeowners responsible for the, or is there a homeowner's association that's responsible for the snow removal?
This one was on private property. Most all of them are right now. I couldn't find a good picture with fences on both sides for one 15 feet wide, but this can give you a little bit, you know, give me an idea. This one is a 10-foot wide easement, so you're going to have another two and a half feet on each side for future ones, and as you can see, that's, you know, even 10 feet wide is, you don't feel so claustrophobic, and you have room for snow removal. The other change we're asking for is, currently, there's a requirement that buildings be 10 feet away from a pedestrian easement. We are changing that to five feet, because with it being wider, in most cases, in a outlot, you're still going to have ample space from the actual sidewalk and any fence. There are some diagrams in your packet there that show the different ways it could still happen. I think I said that wrong, where it's going to be, the setback would be 12 and a half feet from the center line to the building. So, if you have a 15-foot wide outlot, and your sidewalk's here, even if the...
We can't see what you're pointing at.
Oh.
There you go.
With the 15-foot wide outlot, building is, yeah, 12 and a half feet from the center line of the sidewalk to the building, or in most cases, it'd end up being five feet, which is the same as what a side yard setback is in most residential districts, so you're still, you know, similar to what you are today. And in all of these instances, when you, when you look at the different three versions of it, you're building to building, and all three of them are 25 feet. The third text amendment is not really an amendment, but more of a clarification of how to measure block length. There's been some, over the years, some different interpretations between planning staff and developers about how exactly to measure it. The wording in the subdivision ordinance wasn't really clear-cut, so our proposal is that you measure the entire perimeter of the block and divide by two, and that would be your block length. The block length is, the maximum block length today is 1,320 feet. That is not changing, that is staying the same. There is one instance where it is changing, and that would be in neighborhoods that were platted prior to December 31, 1949. That would, that block length would change to 1,000 feet. The purpose for that is that in those older neighborhoods, you've mostly seen smaller blocks, and so to keep the character of the neighborhood and any kind of infill redevelopment, we wanted to change that to 1,000 feet. That's all I have. Take any questions?
Questions for Tom? I don't think we see any, thank you. Do we have any testimony in support of these text amendments? Any testimony in opposition? I assume we don't have any, we didn't think of any questions, so we will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Calling for action text amendment number 14010, which is the amendments to title 26 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, and the staff recommendation is approval.
Move approval? Second.
Any discussion?
This is a, we've seen applications here that have resulted from the problems that arise from the requirement, or the minimum requirement of five feet for such a pedestrian easement, and as Tom mentioned, there are problems with perceived safety, and there are problems with maintenance, and I think it's a good step forward that we are going to alleviate those problems with this wider easement requirement.
Any other comments? All right, we'll call the vote.
Weber?
Yes.
Beacham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes. Motion carries eight to zero, and calling for action text amendment number 14011, which is the amendments to the zoning ordinance with, regarding the minimum separation between buildings and pedestrian way easements, the prop, excuse me, no property. The staff recommendation is approval.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? It's always nice when we can amend for clarity, that way people know what the standards are before they get too far down the process, so going to support the text amendment. Call the vote, please.
Weber?
Yes.
Beacham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes. Motion for approval carries eight to zero. These are recommendations to the City Council.
All right, at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Seeing no one coming, oh, you do have one, thank you, sir.
So, I'm a resident of the Village of Hallup, excuse me, resident of the Village of Hallum, and a member of the Hallum Village Board. I know in the, probably near future, you're going to be met with some requests for zoning changes in southwest Lancaster County for a proposed wind farm. I'd just like the commission to give real careful consideration to zoning changes and what it will do to adjacent property owners with those changes that could be proposed.
Thank you. Was there anyone else wishing to speak on an item that was not on our agenda? Seeing no one, we are adjourned.